Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Virginia Council Meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, January 28, 2020, and I'll call the meeting order at 5:30 PM. Welcome to everybody who's in the audience this evening and those who are listening at home either on YouTube on the on the regular public access channel. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Bearbu?
President.
Name? Paulson?
Here.
Yandich?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Barneselli?
Here.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move to item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is the part of the agenda where we have anyone in the audience the opportunity to come and speak, ask questions, make comments, or address the council on any issue they may have. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, move to item five, the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or citizen of the City of Virginia requests that an item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on January 14, 2020, and the public hearing that was also held on January 14, 2020. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 20-002, the Schedule of Bills. Item 5.3 is approve the following travel requests. 5.3A, the Police Department Officer Henry Trunk of the Police Department to attend the Advanced Search and Seizure Seminar, March 10 through the 12th, 2020, in Anoka, Minnesota, at a cost of $690. Item 5.3A2, Chief Nicole Mattson to attend the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Conference to be held April 19 through the 22nd, 2020, in St. Paul, at a cost of $872. Item 5.3A3, Officer Katherine Crawl to attend the Crisis Intervention Team Training, March 5 and 6, Duluth, on March 5 and 6, 2020, at a cost of $338.63. Item 5.3B, Council and Administration. 5.3B1, Legislative Action Day, 2020, in St. Paul, will be on March 11. Cost is $70 per person and $150 for hotel plus mileage. Any councillor wants to attend? Item 5.3B2, Chris, Mayor of Fiyordi, and our City Administrator Britt C. Bennis to attend the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Annual Conference, March 17 through the 19th, 2020, in St. Cloud, Minnesota, at a total cost of $1,556.68. And finally, under the consent agenda, item 5.4, approve the temporary liquor license for the Lyric Center to be held on February 14, 2020. These are the consent agenda items that are said today, and I'm looking for a motion to approve unless a councillor has one they'd like to pull for discussion.
I'll move the consent agenda be approved.
Consent agenda move for approval by councillor Bearbu, is there support? Support by councillor Yandich, later on first councillor Barneselli, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item six, appearances. We have no one scheduled to appear before the council this evening, so once again, we invite anybody from the audience who'd like to come up and address the council, you're welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to item seven, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business this evening. Move to item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1, adopt a resolution approving the issuance of healthcare facilities refunding revenue bonds by the Duluth Economic Development Authority to refinance a project located in the city. And Britt, could you just give a brief synopsis of this? Thank you.
Essentia had received bonds from a previous sale and used the funds from that bond that was taken out by DIA, the Duluth Economic Development Authority, for Virginia property. So because they want to refinance this bond and the money was used on Virginia property, we have to approve refinancing.
And these are funds that are, the city's not affecting in any way by the funding.
Not want any way, shape, or form. There's no obligation from us financially or any other obligation except for to approve them refinancing the bond.
Very good, thank you. Councillor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question regarding, were these bonds attached to the clinic facility? Is that what property that is being described for this refinancing purpose?
Yes, the clinic.
So it's the refinancing of the bonds on?
Yeah, because we haven't done anything with the hospital.
It's the clinic.
The clinic, okay, thank you.
Thank you, for the, yeah, good clarification there. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll move the resolution approving the issuance of healthcare facility refunding bond.
Move to approve by councillor Johnson, is there support? Support by councillor Freely, and is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item 8.2, adopt a resolution for change order number four with Casper Construction for the Midway Drive project, but there's no change in the project costs. Is this that, this isn't the $5,000 reduction, is it? This is, so...
Authorizing the change in contract for the type of betuminus that they used?
Ah, okay, but there's no additional cost in charge of this, just a bit too many uh, change order for the spring. Thank you.
I'll move the resolution change number four to Casper Construction for Midway Drive improvements.
Thank you. Moved to approve by councillor Johnson, is there support?
I'll support, just quickly for discussion.
Yeah, support by councillor Freely, discussion councillor Freely.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a different type of betuminus overlay, or?
Different type of mix.
Different type of mix. And we don't know whether it's a higher quality, lower quality, or below quality necessarily.
Similar quality.
Similar quality. And the reason being, they didn't really say.
The request, the contractor requested, it could have been an issue of supply and demand, they weren't able to get what was specified.
And it has no impact on the quality of our completed project.
No, SCH didn't feel it was going to have any impact whatsoever.
All right, I move, I support.
Thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.3, approve the pay estimate number five for the Midway Drive project to Casper Construction, the amount of $139,000, let me repeat that, $139,179.56. This, this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I will move the pay estimate number five for Midway Project for discussion.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Johnson, is there support? Support by councillor Yandich, further discussion councillor Johnson, do you have any more discussion?
How many more payments before the Midway Project is finalized?
Maybe at least one, if not two, because they need to put the wear course down still.
So this will be probably next fall when we?
Midsummer, it should be wrapped up. We hope that they're going to be able to start right away in the spring.
Is this, because there's already a course on there, that's that time period we wait for on all our projects? Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And this is a regular draw of the estimates based on the schedule. Very good, thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Councillor Bearbu?
Councillor Johnson, the reason we do this is the winter months will show any flaws in the base course that they put down, so if there's any flaws, they can cut them open and fix them if there's soils that are bad, et cetera. So we put that last inch or inch and a half on with the final wear course on that. So that's the reason we do this.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification councillor Bearbu. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.4, appoint Tom Bartovich to the Virginia Economic Development Authority for a six-year term beginning January 1, 2020, to expire December 31, 2025. Motion to approve by?
I'll move approval.
By councillor Freely, been supported by?
No support for discussion.
Councillor? Councillor Paulson, okay, any further discussion? Councillor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to know if, what the bylaws and VIDA for term, I think, is this his second six-year term? Oh, he was filling a partial term, so he's still okay? I don't know what the, if it's nine-year term?
No, it's six years, but he is allowed because he's filling the remainder of a term.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Complete.
Very good, thank you. Okay, motion to approve and support, further discussion? Anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.5, appoint Police Chief Nicole Mattson to the Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communications Board, also known as the RAC Board for the, for 2020, and Deputy Chief Chad Nickel as the alternate.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by councillor Paulson and supported by councillor Bearbu, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.6, appoint Fire Chief Alan Lewis to the Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communication Board, also known as the ECB, for 2020, and Deputy Fire Chief Scott Fredrickson as the alternate.
I'll move.
Moved by councillor Freely, been supported by councillor Barneselli, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.7, approve the purchase of media equipment for the cable broadcasting, this is our local cable access, in the amount of $22,333 to replace old antiquated equipment that is no longer useful. Is that correct?
Sure is.
Yeah, if you have any questions, we can bring Mr. Hardic up, but it's to upgrade the system that, for, for public broadcast, they had a breakdown in their ability to provide the service, and the vendor that had it before is no longer reparable, and so we needed to buy a new, some new equipment, and as a result of the research by, I think the Cable Commission was part of this, and Terry Hardic, that, this was the recommendation and did go through our city staff. So is there any questions? Councillor Paulson, and then onto councillor Freely.
Is this in a budget, or is it coming out of a cable commission budget? Where are the funds coming from?
Well, we have peg fees, and, Sherry, would you?
We have peg fees and franchise fees that'll pay for this.
And that's in the, out of the cable commission umbrella?
Yeah.
Okay, and then as far as the ownership of the equipment, who will be the owner of that equipment?
The equipment belongs to the city.
Excuse me?
Belongs to the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, councillor Johnson?
Is this something that, because it's $22,000 that we had bids on, or what's the process that we follow?
Our purchasing policy requires you get more than two quotes, two quotes at least, and Terry got three, I think.
The one that was the lowest? All brand-new equipment?
Yes.
I will move authorizing the purchase of the equipment for $22,333 from Z Systems Inc.
Thank you. Moved to approve by councillor Johnson, looks like supported by councillor Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Freely?
Didn't we not just put in an entirely new system to the tune of about $80,000, or?
This is our, right here for City Hall.
Exclusively?
Yes.
Okay, so that's separate item from what we're currently?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, we'll move to item nine, committee reports. Item nine point one, the Committee of the Whole Meeting that was held on January 21, 2020, and we'll turn this part of the City Council Meeting over to our City Administrator, Britt C. Brandis. Britt?
Thank you. At the Committee of the Whole Meeting on January 21, we had a presentation from CRD, our Community Resource Development, regarding public, regarding economic development for the City of Virginia. It was moved and supported to authorize or to direct staff to form a task force to continue discussion with CRD and the economic, regarding the economic development contract and review at the next Committee of the Whole Meeting, and we are forming a task force to meet on February 6 to discuss economic development for the City of Virginia.
And we have two individuals from the City Council that are representatives on this task force, which is councillor Johnson and councillor Paulson, correct? Thank you. You need a motion for that? I don't think so.
I don't think so, I think we can just move on with that.
Thank you.
And we also had a request from CRD or the Community Resource Development for an increase in the contract for the downtown redevelopment project grant administration. It was moved and supported to approve the addendum to the contract with Community Resource Development and to allow payment of 10% of each project with the contract not to exceed $50,000.
And the explanation is right now they have one not to exceed 37.5, and with additional funds that were received for them to, to administer, that's the gap that would be filled, so from a $37,500 commitment, it'll be an additional $2,500 in addition to that, to make that $50,000, correct? Thank you.
We'll move the amendment to the contract.
Councillor Johnson moves the amendment to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support by councillor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Seeing, oh, councillor Johnson?
And this additional, isn't new money, that money has been part of the plan since we started this project, they just needed to come forward, is that my understanding? Thank you, Britt.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Dana Hilton and the HRA was present to discuss her request regarding the road project in Pine Mill Court. The city agreed to look at that in their 2021, 2023 street project. Dana was also present with Jesse Lynn, the Finance Manager of Washington Manor, and they were present to talk about the budget for 2020. Fortunately, a rental increase was suggested as the capital needs and the structural repairs for the building are very large, and we need to start planning to get some of these projects done to maintain the integrity of the building. It was moved and supported to approve a Washington Manor budget with a 1.5% increase in the rent, rental rate at Washington Manor for 2020.
Do I have a motion?
Also move, Mayor.
Councillor Bearbu moves the motion to approve the Washington Manor 1.5% increase in rental rate per month for 2020, is there support?
Support.
Support by councillor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was also moved and supported to allow Dana Hilton as the HRA Executive Director to proceed with quotes for reciting the windows at Washington Manor.
Also move, Mayor.
Moved by councillor Bearbu and supported by councillor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
We had a great discussion with Fire Chief Alan Lewis and Fire Marshal Chris Clark regarding the fire occupancy ordinance and the vacant building ordinance, and I strongly encourage if anybody has any questions on those two ordinances to give the Fire Hall a call at Mr. Brian Silver, our Park and Recreation Director, was present to discuss the request for a Live Barn venue agreement for broadcasting services at the Miners Event and Convention Center. We had a discussion about this contract, and we were expressing that there's some issues we had with the current contract, thus it was moved and supported to allow the city attorney to review the contract with Live Barn and bring suggestions to the next Committee of the Whole Meeting for discussion.
Do I have a motion?
I will move to carry that forward to the next city, uh, Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Moved by councillor Johnson to have our city attorney review and bring back the review and the recommendation to the next Committee of the Whole Meeting, is supported by? Yeah, supported by councillor Freely, further discussion, first councillor Freely, and then on to councillor Paulson.
Was there any discussion of the potential for other vendors besides Live Barn? Little bit of talk about that, but this is exclusive to Live Barn?
The review of the, of the contract, I know we all had some significant discussion of the concerns we all had about this particular stream of service, and I think we're going to have our city attorney review it and come back and discuss it at the next Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I mean, my understanding is these kinds of systems are kind of state-of-the-art systems for broadcasting within the kind of facility that we're building, so I think that it behooves us to certainly look into this type of thing, then look in terms of like what kind of confidentiality or privacy issues may arise with regard to that, which is some of what we discussed, but I guess I would like to see at some point if there's some other vendors that may be similar or, or more effective or, or less potentially harmful to privacy in the, in the facility, but if we start with this, that's fine, and then if we find that there's another vendor, then we'll move in that direction potentially.
And I think we did have some, some significant discussion about privacy concerns and those kind of things, and access and our ability to, you know, whatever, whatever our authority is, and we don't control that particular, so I think all that contract is moved for, I think we all discussed that you expressed your concern, councillor Paulson expressed her concern, I think we all had concerns about that, so. Anything else you'd like to add councillor Freely? Councillor Paulson?
Mayor, I, I won't be supporting this, and mainly because it's specific to Live Barn. I truly feel that that contract, I don't think could be tweaked, just after going on their YouTube channel and how they, they own all the content, and so I just, I would rather, I would feel much more comfortable opening it up to other vendors to come forward if we do an RFP process. I just don't feel that with this vendor, we're going to get what we are looking for, and to waste time in doing that, I don't think is prudent, so at this time, I'm not, I would like to go forward in the process of trying to find an entity or possibly work with what we have within our cable commission, within Terry Hardic's firm, or however that's going to be growing as, as the miners comes to fruition, but at this time, I just, I can't support spending time reviewing a contract that I don't believe could be tweaked to set to the satisfaction of the city.
Yeah, and I think you expressed that at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, I concur with that, but it was moved and supported to send it back to our city attorney for review and bring back to the Committee of the Whole Meeting, so I think at that time we'll have some more significant discussion about the concerns that you have councillor Paulson and I as well. Any further discussion before we vote councillor Bearbu?
I have a similar concern. We've, we're going to put all this money into the new complex with a broadcast booth up there for individuals to film, do things, and we need to prove who those are. We have local vendors now that broadcast our hockey games, do other things, and I don't want to see this taken outside of the city, plus that Live Barn will be watching our employees totally, because on live, the whole time they're working, that's our responsibility, they should have no, nothing to do with our employees, because they're working many hours in a day from early morning to late in the evening with all the ice that's out there. So I'm dead set against this Live Barn too, on there.
Livestreaming is different from security cameras, so they have, right, so we'll discuss that more further hopefully and come to a, a path moving forward at our Committee of the Whole Meeting. So is there any further discussion? Moving that to the city attorney for review and bringing it back to our Committee of the Whole Meeting, which is scheduled for a week from today, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. A roll call, please, Pam?
Freely? Paulson?
No.
Yandich?
Johnson?
Yes.
Barneselli?
Yes.
Huffy?
Aye, motion, I'm sorry.
Bearbu?
No.
Motion passes for three. Thank you. Okay, next.
The next item on the agenda is, we had been notified by our bond counsel, our attorney that's working with us in the sale of our bonds, that we needed to execute an amendment to the lease agreement with the Virginia Youth Hockey Association that clearly states that they are a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt entity. It was moved and supported to approve that amendment with the Virginia Youth Hockey Association for the lease of the miners' building.
I'll move, move to approve that.
Moved by councillor Freely to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support by councillor Bearbu, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, I'm sorry, councillor Paulson, excuse me.
Mayor, I do have a question as to how, how this works in congruency with one another, and does the bond, since it's un-tax exempt under Vaha, does, is Vaha assuming a liability there?
No, what happens if, if we use our building, our bonding funding for our building for a private purpose, we have to pay sales tax on that, but if Vaha is a 501(c)(3), which they are, we don't pay sales tax on that.
So they're kind of like, almost like a fiscal agent or a pastor agent?
Right, they're helping us by being a 501(c)(3), getting a better bond rate and a tax-exempt rate.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
That's the only comment I was going to make to Mayor, because that's exactly how it works, they'll save us, and plus the rate will probably be lower too when we go out for that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion on the amendment, moved and supported to adopt?
I do have something, Mayor, just want to point out, and it's, it's Vaha because they are the largest user, they have the largest lease, so that's the one that's the most important one.
Good strategy, and thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I presented to the council affidavit for the former Griner Troy lot, the affidavit, clearly this affidavit concerning real property contaminated with hazardous substances for former Griner Troy lot, which states that we can now sell the lot with the understanding that everybody that buys it knows there's contamination underneath the ground, and they will not dig up the property when they buy the property from the city.
And, and the purpose is to be used as a parking lot for that?
It can be used as a parking lot, that is really the only intended use of the property, and once we sign the affidavit with MPC, we will be finally be clear and free to transfer them.
This was a long, arduous process, took years to?
We've been doing testing for the last few years, yes.
MPC and through the, through the certain funding sources for dry cleaning, chemicals, et cetera, so. Councillor Paulson?
I was going to move to approve the affidavit.
Thank you. Moved to approve by councillor Paulson, is there support?
Or, just quick discussion if I could?
Support by councillor Freely for further discussion, further discussion councillor Freely, but?
I guess, like, the MPC then has approved this utilization for a parking lot, and so capping something like that is probably an appropriate thing to do? And in the event it leached out in some capacity, then you just have to tear all that up and go from there, but there hasn't been that issue in the city with regard to this property?
We did do monitoring and didn't see anything.
Yeah, we've been monitoring that for five years? Thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to authorize the resolution hiring Riley McLean as a patrol officer for the City of Virginia.
I will, I will move the hiring of the officer.
Councillor Johnson moves the approval to hire the police, new police officer Riley McLean as a patrol officer for the City of Virginia, is there support? Support by councillor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was noted that St. Louis County has increased their tipping fees in January 2020 for disposal at the county landfill. The city has not increased the tipping fees be charged by the county since early 2000s, and we were not notified of this final increase until after we've, of course, passed our budget. It was moved and supported to send a response to St. Louis County regarding the increase in tipping fees and our displeasure with them.
And it'll be carefully worded by our staff to ensure that our point gets across. Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion to send that letter?
Also move.
Make that motion. Make that motion.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Okay, moved by Council Biondich to send letters, supported by Council Bearbo. Is there any further discussion?
We have one, one point.
Yes, 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 Council Bearbo.
Very disappointed in the county that sent us their initial letter in October with no follow-up that they're going to increase these fees, and by the time they got it, it was after our finalization of our budget. So this is a huge cost extra. It's what, $10 plus a ton?
$10 a ton.
$11 a ton, and we put a lot of tonnage through that facility, and it's not scheduled in our budget. So we had no opportunity to put in our increase in levy to cover those costs as, for the city. So that's why we need to do this and tell them that we're displeased with the way they communicated this. It's like an unfunded mandate, basically.
So if, correct me if I'm wrong here, Britt, but the tipping fee raised in 2014, 2015, 2018, and now again in 2020? Okay, thank you. Moved and supported to send a letter. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve change order number three for the Alcott Park Fountain Restoration Phase Two with a decrease of $5,000.
I'll move.
Moved by Council Freely. Is there support? Support by Council Biondich. Is there further discussion? Just one comment, thank you, to the Alcott Park Fountain Committee for keeping their thumb on the pulse of what's going on there and, and working out an agreement and making sure that we, the contract was properly completed, and it was not, and so they were able to identify those issues and resulting in the decrease of $5,000 moving forward. So thank you for that. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the final pay estimate number six for the Alcott Park Fountain Phase Two project to gardener builders in the amount of $53,620.47. And these funds are coming from donations that the Fountain Committee has received.
And in this particular resolution, I like the word "final."
Final, yes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve that final payroll estimate? Moved to approve by Council Bearbo. Is there support? Support by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Council Baranzelli?
Mayor, thank you. That 53, that's coming out of that fund that they've raised over the years, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Out of the restoration fund, yeah. Yes. You're welcome. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to appoint Council Julian Paulson as the liaison to the VEETA or the Virginia Evolith Economic Development Authority Committee.
We'll move that appointment.
Moved by Council Johnson and supported by Council Freely. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Council Paulson, for volunteering to do that.
It was moved and supported to approve a resolution authorizing a special assessment against a property located at 815 13th Street North for blight remediation.
Hey, thank you.
I'll move.
Moved to approve by Council Paulson. Is there support? Support by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We did the whole meeting recess to a closed meeting at 11:56 a.m. to review the agreement between Essentia Health and the City of Virginia for purchase of real property in Virginia as per Minnesota Statute 13D05, so Division Three. When we read adjourned the closed meeting at 12:15, it was moved and supported to allow the city attorney to list the deficiencies and the deficiencies, I think, in the current proposal with Essentia and to present to the council for review.
Okay.
I will move to direct city staff and attorneys to review and make recommendations.
Very good, thank you. Council Johnson, supported by Council Baranzelli. Further discussion?
Just make sure we get that, make sure you get that changed to deficiencies, not
We'll make that correction in the minutes. Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We had a discussion regarding the Coca-Cola bottling property on North Side. They had sustained some damage due to a snow load issue on the roof, and they had requested that the city consider the purchase of their property once they have it fixed. We moved and supported to respectfully decline the offer for the acquisition of the Coca-Cola bottling property.
Thank you. Do we need a motion?
No.
I just want to let you know I may have a, an inquiry for, for that billing. You can pass on the Coca-Cola, so thank you.
That'd be wonderful.
Hopefully. Okay.
And that is all I have from that meeting?
Okay. We'll move to item 9.2, the Personnel Committee that was held on January 22, 2020. Did you want me to handle this? Okay, all right, thank you. Item 9.2A, the committee moved to appoint Carly Gobats and reappoint Alan Beer to the Parking, uh-oh, backup. Once again, to appoint Carly Gobats and reappoint Alan Beer to the Parking Rec Commission for a three-year term beginning February 1, 2020, and ending February 1, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve by Council Johnson. Is there support? Support by Council Freely. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 9.2B, appoint Tom Tezak and James Makowski to the Public Utilities Commission, each for a three-year term beginning February 1, 2020, and ending February 1, 2023. Motion to approve these appointments by Council Baranzelli. Is there support? Support by Council Freely. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 9.2C, reappoint Arlene Jersey, is that correct? I'm sorry, thank you. Arlene Jersey, and appoint Jan Peplinjack to the Library Commission, each for a three-year term beginning February 1, 2020, and ending February 1, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Moved to approve those appointments by Council Johnson and supported by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 9.2D, reappoint Mary McReynolds and Roger Hoffman to the Planning and Zoning Commission, each for a three-year term beginning February 1, 2020, and ending February 1, 2023.
I'll move.
Moved by Council Johnson, supported by Council Freely. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 9.2E, reappoint Nancy Roswell to the Hospital Advisory Commission for a three-year term beginning February 1, 2020, and ending February 1, 2023.
I'll support that.
Motion to approve by Council Baranzelli. Is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Council Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. We, as this committee, had some discussion as to the purpose of the Hospital Advisory Commission, and when they last held a meeting and when they will hold a meeting. Do we know any of that information?
That, that, go ahead, no, go ahead, Council Bearbo, and then I'll jump in if I have to.
That Advisory Committee is just on an as-needed basis, Council Johnson. It's only met, what, about two or three times, I believe, Mayor, over a period of time. It's just, it was basically a citizen advisory committee to issues that arise out of the hospital commission. So that's not much purpose anymore that, for it. So I don't know, we need to continue that committee.
The original purpose was, as the, as the lease agreement unfolded, there were some concerns and comments that the community had about how this lease was moving forward, and the committee wanted a voice to make sure that the lease was being adhered to. And so there was a local citizen advisory board that was called upon by our city admin, our city attorney at that time, which was Mr. Boudarak, and we met, I think, and I was on there one time, three times to discuss those. The other members have, have left the area or, I passed away, and so there's no, there's really, it has not been an active hospital committee. The one that Council Paulson sits on, you know, I think in, Ms. Bearbo, Mrs. Bearbo, two and others, Mr. Petrini, that's, that's the Essentia Board where information that this does here isn't necessarily publicly disseminated, but it gives us a voice at the table there to know what's going on. And so to bridge that gap, they wanted to have a public advisory board where these citizens could express their concerns about Essentia, and it would be brought to that board, and that Council Paulson and Ms. Bearbo and Mr. Petrini sits on, to be discussed at that board, meaning for, you know, to get an answer, you know, to what needs to be done. So it was kind of a bridge the gap type of deal, but it has not been active. I'm not sure there really is a need to continue to do so unless the council has another question or concern. Does that answer your question, Council Johnson?
It does, and that's kind of what my point was, is what's the purpose of appointing somebody to an inactive group, or do we need to formally deactivate it, or what's the process moving forward for this? And, or, on the other hand, do we, as we're at a point with Essentia, the lease, and in the potential negotiations, should we be asking these folks to come forward with questions and utilize them that way? So I guess that's, that's why I wanted to ask about after sitting in the meeting last week and thinking about that. What's the right way to move forward with this?
Well, I think one of the reasons, Council Johnson, also, is that it's in, it's in our city charter that this, this commission is, is formed, and it was formed at the time before Essentia took over, to oversee the Virginia Hospital at that time. And so that was a carryover from the charter. We would need to make a charter amendment to dissolve that particular committee moving forward, so.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
I guess I'd be fine with the appointment, just as a formality, but then I would request that we look at what we need to do moving forward as we change, potentially change interactions with Essentia and the charter and such.
Yes, thank you, Council Johnson. Okay, Council Bearbo?
Yeah, what we need to do is, Steve, leave this appointment right now, but then ask the president of the Charter Commission to set up a meeting. There's really no purpose anymore. Those individuals with what we've been doing with the closed sessions with Essentia, they can't attend anyway. So, because those are closed through Minnesota statutes, and they would not be able to attend because they're not members of the governing body that is allowed to be at these closed sessions, the council's allowed, plus their representatives. So your point is very well taken. We need to just leave it right now and then go on to the next step, which would be having the Charter Commission make a recommendation.
Hey, thank you. Is that any, any further discussion on that one, Council Johnson?
Mayor, no.
Thank you. Okay, the report was moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And the last item on the Personnel Committee was item 9.2F, approve the application for the HITA grant through St. Louis County in the amount of $90,000. And could you just briefly give a little explanation, Britt, to the, to the public?
The HITA grant will be used for, in the end, we're looking for an opioid mapping system so that we can better identify where opioid overdoses are occurring within the area. And it's not just Virginia, it's the whole northern part of St. Louis County. And we would just be the fiscal agent, so we'd be responsible for the employee, for the vehicle, for the computer, would get information to this employee of where these overdoses occurred, and then they would go assist the family with resources or the victim with resources.
And we would use that $90,000 for that purpose?
For that, for that employee, for the vehicle, and for their computer.
Very good, thank you.
It's very exciting.
Yes, I think so. We have to, it's our commitment and involvement, and hopefully this funding continues to move forward to make this a long-term funding source. Council Paulson?
Mayor, if I may, I think Chief Mattson just presented it to the small group at the Personnel Committee meeting, so I don't know if everyone has had a chance to receive the information. I feel extremely comfortable going forward with this after Chief Mattson kind of explained what the program was. And it's my understanding that not only, it would be a, basically a civilian hire to map out and work with the Boundary Waters Drug Task Force, as well as the Duluth Police Department, that also has an opioid management system or program within the Duluth Police Department's division. And it would give us a better understanding of what, what special needs or what needs are we could possibly work through with, in terms of program, programming, mental health, opioid addiction information. In St. Louis County, the actual, I think the county has formed a task force that I think this will parallel very, very nicely with and kind of work in conjunction to what the county is now trying to accomplish. So I feel really comfortable going forward because the $90,000 grant will cover the civilian hire's salary and, and pretty much everything that that, that person is going to need. And this is kind of looked at, I think, as like a pilot program, and if it is successful, hopefully there would be continued dollars to follow that. And it would be my suggestion and recommendation that we do approach St. Louis County and talk, have a dialogue with them regarding this type of a position and how we could best utilize it and utilize the information, working together. So, you know, I don't know if, if there's any other information that can be passed along, but I think that might help some of the people that were not at that meeting. But I, as a counselor, I feel very comfortable with what Chief Mattson proposed, and I'm
Very good, thank you. Council Johnson?
Not at that portion of the meeting, so I think that would be helpful. A question, because we're working with the Duluth Department, is there two people then, or is it one person? Or how does that, because Duluth has a larger need than I would think?
Duluth already has an existing employee that does this.
Yes, they do.
And so they actually are giving us their job description so that we can help get this employee up and running on the north part of the range. This employee that we're going to have here, it'll be housed here, that we're hoping the grant application is in. We don't, haven't got it yet, we just need to accept it, would be for northern St. Louis County.
Okay, that clarifies a lot.
The Duluth person would do the southern St. Louis County, and this person would do northern.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And if we approve it tonight, I still think it'd be neat to have
We'll definitely get you the information, yes.
Thank you.
It was a very time-sensitive issue. The grant had to be in by last Friday, so we had just a small window of time, so we grabbed the Personnel Committee while we could to, to do discussion about regarding the hiring of this employee.
Thank you for the additional information.
Okay, any other, before we ask for a motion, Council Bearbo?
Yeah, Britt, so this is going to be, because of the type of grant is, they have to be housed here, they can't be housed in the county building. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure. So who's providing the vehicle? Will we be providing the vehicle or the county?
We will be, the grant covers the vehicle cost.
Okay, all right.
Hey, thank you. Any further discussion before we ask for a motion? I'll need a motion.
I'll move to approve that application.
Yeah, I'll, I'll still, so, support that motion.
Moved by Council Freely and supported by Council Bearbo. Is there any further discussion?
I just have
Council Bearbo?
I just have one discussion. As you all know, my profession is a pharmacist, and this is one of the most important issues that we have in northern St. Louis County. This part of the state has the highest opioid percentage basis of any place in the state of Minnesota. So there's other sources that are going to be used. We're going to try to get a number of pharmacists together to help start working on some of this, too. We've talked all this with some people, too, so we've got some professional people involved. And so this is extremely important up here.
Hey, thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Paulson?
Mayor, just, just to add on, on to that is, what Chief Mattson described is, the police department and as well as the hospital have a way to track overdoses based on a, you know, call of the officers or a visit to the emergency room. What they don't have What they don't have, being able to track or map, is people that actually have Narcan that are able, like, they are giving it now to people to be able to, if you have a child that has an opioid addiction, they will give the parents the Narcan, but those types of cases are not being reported. So this person's job would be to look into all cases of overdoses, which I think we're going to find that information extremely valuable once that person gets...
And there's another portion, if I may, Mayor, that they're looking at.
Counsel Bearbow?
Because of the short duration of Narcan, and an individual gets a high-heavy overdose of an opioid or whatever it may be, if they refuse transport in an ambulance when they have this, there's been a whole number of deaths because they get a secondary respiratory issue. And there's going to be work on trying to get legislation through the state, if you're there and you have to use Narcan, it's automatically shipped to a hospital, because there's been so many deaths, and they aren't going to have a choice on this because there's been too many people there. Whether it'll pass or not, that's another issue, but that's one thing that's going to be moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And we'll need this because, you know, the Governor's Bonding Bill, there's a lot of money is supposed to allocate for opioid addiction in order for us, if we have enough tracking mechanism, you know, we could be eligible for those fundings. So I think it's important for us to move forward with that. So it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
There is a way that they can monitor this, because you have to get the Narcan from a legal source to start with. So if they give it to a parent, that parent would have to sign some kind of a log situation so when they come back to get another set of that, that's the way they can monitor this. And I don't know whether that's been thought of, but I think it has already. So there's monitoring professional people, ambulances, doctors, those people, they all know because they have to automatically report.
Okay, thank you. Moved and supported, is now, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I think on your desk, there were two other items that were passed on for tonight's meeting, and I was remiss in putting it under Section 8.8 and 8.9, so I'd like to refer back to item 8.8, which is a resolution number 20030 that we passed on January 14, 2020, regarding the designating of the depositories for 2020. We're looking for a motion to amend this resolution to add those highlighted on your handout, which is adding Northern Securities, Baker Tilly, and municipal advisors to this resolution.
Also move, Mayor, the additions.
Moved by Counsel Bearbow, is there support? Support by Counsel Johnson, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then under 8.9, this was distributed by our finance HR Director, Sheri Erickson. This is the compliance report. What this is, this is your pay equity report, or comparable worth, just for the other term. And we're required to submit by resolution, correct? Or not by resolution, but approve the compliance report for submission to the state. And this is the compliance report as prepared by our finance HR Director. Moved to move that forward for submission by Counsel Freedle, is there any further, is there support? I'm sorry. Support by Counsel Johnson, is there any further discussion, Counsel Johnson?
Sheri, can you explain what this means as an overview?
As an overview, this is my test report, which pretty much says that, yeah, we're in compliance. First part there, under 2, the statistical test, it should be 80%, 0% or 80% or more. But then there's a default test under B, which is called the T-test, and we fall within those results so that we pass there. And then the salary range test needs to be 0, 80% or more, and we have a 96%. And then number 4, exceptional service test, needs to be 0 or 80% more, and we're at 81. So I just need approval to go ahead and submit to the state.
And really, the purpose of this is, you know, Minnesota has passed a law saying, measured, you measured at that time male-dominated positions, female-dominated positions, and used a formula to determine if there are female-dominated position and a male-dominated position that add equal points based on the analysis by a private company. And if the female-dominated position had less money, you had to bring those female-dominated pieces up to the male-dominated positions in order to have pay equity. And within the certain guidelines established by the state, this is something we have to do every year, and I, hopefully maybe that explains it a little bit further, every three years, excuse me, has to be done. Does that help a little bit, Counsel Johnson?
Yes, I just see a lot of numbers, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm approving for the submittal. Thank you.
Thank you. They moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to item 10, Commission Liaison Department Head Reports. Does anybody on the council have a report they'd like to give this evening? Counsel Johnson, would you like to comment on the Martin Luther King March and the rally at the college? Did you have anything you'd like to report on that? I thought that was a very exciting event.
It was a great collaboration between entities, once again, the Human Rights Commission, the Diversity Group, which kind of oversees diversity at the college, and the Multicultural Club, which is a brand-new group of individuals came together. I'm guessing we had about 150 marchers, about 200 people present. Counsel Freedle had an amazing speech that he gave, it was very moving and very appreciative of that. Mayor Cuffee read proclamation from the city, and then we had a gentleman speak, and his last name was Turner, his first name escapes me, but he was Keith. He was a football player at Vermillion Community College, and basically he spoke directly to the student athletes at Masabi of the importance of the opportunities that they were being afforded. And it was really motivational, and we intend to do the same thing next year, Martin Luther King Day, meet at the minors at noon, walk to the college. It's a good route, we had supportive city staff, and it really is one of those things that, being a city council, it's a privilege to be a part of and an honor to see citizens of all ages, of all races, of all ethnic backgrounds coming together and being supporting. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Counsel Biondich?
Thank you. The library meeting was quick, but the one big announcement they had was that the elevator was being installed a lot quicker than they anticipated, so it should be up and running very shortly.
Very good, thank you. I just have one thing I'd like to bring up, and that is, I had afforded the opportunity by invitation to go to the library, annual friends of the library meeting, and I was able to go because they used to have it on a Tuesday on a council night, they did have it last Wednesday. It was very informative, very professionally presented, and I learned a lot about the programs that they provide there, and, you know, even though you try to keep your thumb on the pulse of what they do there, but it's, they do yeoman's work over there, and a fine job moving forward, so I appreciated that opportunity, so. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up before we go to our department heads? Bueller, anyone? Okay. Anything from the city administrator's desk? Two by left here is Representative from Attentive Law Firm, who is our city attorneys of record, and Mr. Bupesh Patney is sitting in for Brian Lindsey, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, I'm happy to be here.
We're happy to have you. Thank you. And anything from you?
Yes, I would like to inform the public that absentee voting is up and running right now. We have all our ballots available for the presidential primary, and you can request an application by mail or come in and vote anytime until March 3.
And we've had a few stragglers coming in, I shouldn't call them strikers, but we had some people come in, do some early voting, right? I didn't mean that in disrespects, okay, thank you. Anything from the voice of HR and finance?
You took care of it, thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, is there anything else that anybody would like to bring up before we adjourn? Okay, well, we adjourned to our, yes, Mr. Hardika, our Director of our Public Access, do a fine job.
Just a couple of things to share with you over the next hour. Now, what was I going to share? Oh, yeah, just, thank you. Just wanted to let you know that with the broadcast system that we're doing, as we're also providing public access for three other channels, over the course of the life of the broadcast system that we've been using, which has been about five and a half, going on six years, that has brought in, in addition to franchise fees, PEC fees, that has brought in $20,000. So the equipment is actually making money for us, and it's basically paying for itself. Just so you understand, it's not just, you know, PEC fees, franchise fees, that type of a thing. Also, with the new system, I think you'll be interested in this, that we will be looking at the probability of live streaming Channel 5 24/7 for a modest fee for an encoder and then a subscription rate, which, you know, all the folks that don't have cable will be able to watch Channel 5, whether it be the bulletin board, or you guys, or whatever is their favorite sport. So that's kind of cool. Also, concerning the system that's in place here, one point of information, your microphones are voice activated. If you leave them on, I don't know if anyone knew this or not, if you're not talking, it's going to switch off anyway. So if you've got a back and forth going, you don't have to keep punching the button on and off, that type of a thing, or if you take a break, you know, they're all just automatically muted except for this guy here. The last thing I want to mention is, this new system is extremely difficult for the filmer to manage because there's such a long lag time. For these cameras, the two cameras that you have, to move into position takes three, four, or five seconds sometimes, then the take button, that can be another two or three seconds. And we're getting feedback that, how come the filmer isn't taking a picture of the person that's talking? And that's why I wanted to bring it up on air, it's because he can't. And I do have a fix for that, and that would be, and we can discuss this at some other time, put two cameras in here and just do a direct switch, and then problem solved. So I'd like to let you know that. And if there are no other questions, you have a good night.
So Mr. Hardika, two cameras, or do you want to put a camera at each desk?
You know, we could have body cameras, too.
A little humor, that's all it was. Thank you, Mr. Hardika.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion? Mr. Hardika, can you bring back a price what those two cameras would be to us so we can really seriously take a look at that?
$1,700 apiece.
I think we could find that.
Yeah, plus whatever city staff is going to have to be paid to wire them in, so that's, yeah. So that's...
We appreciate that, thank you very much. Keep up the good work. Okay. All right, anything else to come before the council? Seeing none, we will adjourn to our next council meeting, which will be Tuesday, February 11, 2020, at 5:30 PM, right here in the council chambers. Everyone have a safe couple of weeks, and if you have any questions currently, please call our city staff, we're available to help you out with whatever you need. Stand adjourned, thank you, good night.